I'm going to call the meeting of the Essex City Council to order for December 10th. The first item on the agenda is any agenda additions or changes?
We're going to table the first business item, 5A, to January 21st.
Okay. Any other agenda additions or changes?
None in the room.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. That passes. Five to zero. We'll move on to public to be heard. If there's anybody online that would like to speak, please raise your hand. I see Risa has her hand raised, and I'll go into the room in a minute.
Thank you, Amber. Further down, I think it's like F or something, there's going to be discussion regarding post markings being allowed. Are you going to ask for comment then, or should I say what I want to say now?
You can choose whichever you would like. But yes, we will ask for public comment, but if you'd like to do it now, you could certainly do it as well.
No, I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Anybody else online? Not seeing anybody in the room.
No, no one in the room.
Alright. Thank you. We will move on then to the City Clerk Department head brief to council.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for having me.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, Amber.
You're welcome anytime. You're welcome anytime. I mean, yeah, yeah, this is an open door policy.
Stay and listen, but I'm fine. Yeah, so I wrote a memo. You have the memo that wasn't supposed to be in there. So I don't really have anything new to add. I was asked about the, because we were looking into becoming a passport agency, and I was asked about that the other day, and I sent an email out to the person that I thought I had sent the original email out to in May, and got a response right away that they didn't have it, why we send it. So I said, okay, so I sent that out today.
Okay.
Maybe something will move faster.
Awesome.
Cool. Thank you. Did we, as a reminder, do we budget for revenue in this fiscal year?
Against that?
I'd have to look and see. I don't.
Did you want to know if we budgeted?
Yeah, if we had budgeted any potential revenue from that program.
I don't think we had budgeted revenue for that.
Yeah, I've never seen it.
No problem. Yeah, you don't have to dig for it right now. I can look it up later, so it's fine.
Anybody have any questions for Susan?
I don't at the moment, because I, we've talked a number of times recently, and you've got a lot of this covered in your brief, so I appreciate that. And again, I really do appreciate the work that you do. You know, I will just simply say that it's not uncommon for me to get compliments for your department and for you specifically. And so I really do appreciate the work and the, you know, the expertise that you're bringing to this role, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll echo that for sure. And then just the question of how you're settling back in, your life at Two Lincoln?
Yeah, it seems to be going well. I just moved my setup from my computer yesterday from what I thought I had it the way I liked it. And I'm like, no, I want to move it this way. Still figuring it all out.
For anyone that hasn't been here, I encourage you to come look. Susan's office is the only one that really has any sort of decor on the walls. How much she enjoys being in the space. Listen, I don't go, I'm not, my fob doesn't get me to your door.
You can come and ask to come through and talk to me.
So I just wanted to say that it really is, it's nice to see. It's, it's, Dan being right there is the assistant clerk, and then your office right there. It's a great way for people to be greeted. So, thank you for everything you do, Susan.
You're welcome.
Brian Aling? I had a great time meeting with Susan and Dan who helped me perform a wedding on Tuesday. They were my witnesses.
That's fantastic.
Very nice.
We're doing, we did another one in City Hall? That's awesome.
Only in the new City Hall, so.
Fantastic.
Right in front of our little holiday train tree, so.
In front of the Christmas tree, exactly. That's awesome.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Alright, well, thanks. Thanks, Susan. Appreciate the update, and we'll see you soon, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Have a good night.
Alright, we're moving on to discussion and consideration of the Governance Committee's Charter Change Final Report and Recommendations and Disillusion of the Governance Committee.
Thank you, Amber. So I know several, I don't have a full accounting, but several committee are online, and Candace is here and in the room, and Marla and I were going to kind of speak to the overview. So we met with all of you, I don't know, a month and a half ago to kind of give you an update on what we've gone through for the year. And, you know, at this point, this is our final report and recommendations. We, I know Brad put together, and a special thank you to Brad's support throughout the whole process, and everyone, I think, did a great job on the committee, et cetera. He's got a huge report in there, I'm sure you looked at, and I'm going to focus on the executive summary. Just so, there's no point in going through every page in there. So, you know, I think the big takeaways is we're focusing on the structural reforms, not some of the soft things per your direction to us. So we continued that. Sometimes when we were doing our community outreach, people would ask about that. And so that's how we, you know, inform them kind of what our mission was. And that's something that you guys can look at in the future, certainly. And as you know from before, we kind of had, we queried ourselves, then we queried counselors and trustees from 2010 forward. Then we looked into nine similar communities in the state and got information from them, compiled all that, kind of, kind of got a little bit of a direction, and then we've had a lot of community outreach of different types of forums, online, in person. And then we had the survey going on, collected that data. We didn't have a huge amount, like at each event, there wasn't tons of people or anything. I think it was noted, it was like single numbers at the different events. And then the survey, I think, was 57 or so, if I'm remembering correctly. But it's feedback nonetheless. And so, after going through all of that stuff, digging through everybody's comments and the numbers, and then our own background of all the research we did, we kind of came up with, and you can see on the executive summary there, several items for no change, things we think we should change, and then some future exploration. And so, on the no change, we, we retain the council manager form of government, keep elections at large, so each counselor is representing the entire community. Continue with the president elected by the counselors, you know, the initial meeting of each year. Keep it at five counselors and maintain the, there's different people run every year, so they're all staggered. And then, we don't have term limits today, and we'd keep it that way. So those are our recommendations there. And the things that we recommended for changes, a lot of math and that went into the counselor stipends, we've, long discussions on this one. And we were recommending that it be raised from 2,500 to 3,600. And in the report, you can see what all the other nine communities we looked at is to, to get a sense of things. And there is a lot of variance there. We also are recommending that the council president get 25% higher stipend than the rest of the council. Again, to recognize the extra duties, and that, again, if you look at the data, other communities do that as well. And we also address the situation of, well, when does the councilor pay get updated? Because it seems like a period of years go by, and then we talk about it, and hem and ha and all this, and it's gotten behind, and then we get it caught up, and then another 10 years goes by. And so we looked at just, to make it easy, just if, come up with the right number, and we're recommending a number, and you guys can do what you want. But just put it to a CPI every year, and theoretically, you know, it takes the staff a short number of minutes to look that up, and it's a standard thing that everybody knows about, and then we don't have to waste time debating it every number of years or a potential conflict of interest or perception of conflict of interest. So anyway, so that we did that on that one. And then, on the last change, was a comprehensive charter review every 12 years. So we learned about this in the, when we were doing the nine community review, and thought, oh, that's a good idea, because often what we do here, and I think one of the recent meetings, she was like, oh, we found this one little section of the charter that should probably get updated, and we look at that. And so we do that like as it comes up. And this would be like a full, let's look at the whole thing, every number of years. And then we debated, well, how often? Because it costs money, right? So what we just did, we were not focused on the whole charter, we were focused kind of on the government part. But, you know, it costs the staff time, you know, Brad was involved, and he spent time on it. So it's not something you want to do too frequently. And it also doesn't preclude, you guys find something somewhere else that needs immediate attention, that you can't do it. So this is just like a comprehensive every 12 years. So those were the changes. I spent more time on that just because they're different. But, and you can read the report for more details. And then, the future, the soft reforms which I mentioned. And then, at one of the community forums, someone brought up about recall, which Essex has just implemented for their board. And again, that's something that could also be looked at. We're not making any recommendations on that, just a point of information. So, am I missing anything here?
Steve, I think you covered everything on there. I think, you know, you know, from our perspective, I think, you know, there's a lot of work in there. We want to give thanks again to Brad, we want to thank Regina, and thank the rest of the city council for allowing us to do this work. It's been a lot of really good work, it's been over the last, what, seven months we've been doing this now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, really appreciate the opportunity to do this. And I think we'll open up the questions in the council, if you have any.
Counsel? I can't see the, yeah, okay, now I can.
It's alright. I'll go first and simply say, first and foremost, again, thank you for all this work. I'm sorry that I couldn't have hung out longer with the group, but, you know, that was understandably, I know why. But, you know, there is a tremendous amount of work that went into this. Saw this in that, those first couple of weeks that I was there, and it's obvious from the report, the work that also followed. The one thing that stood out for me, though, is, again, the level of community engagement, or lack thereof. That has me significantly concerned about moving any of these things forward. I mean, generally, personally, the things that you list for no change, I'm okay with. The changes, outside of the CPI, I really don't want to get into the rest because it would seem self-serving, and I'd rather not be the decider on that. The charter review, I actually do agree with, and I would like to see that move forward. But, my thought right now is that I would like to see the committee do one last task. And that one last task is, you know, up to the committee, and again, I'm saying this for myself, is either come up with four questions, or whatever the questions are that'll go on the ballot, that can get us the feedback we need in order to be clear about how the community wants us to move forward. Or, the committee agree to trying to do more engagements in order to gather more data so that we can have a better sense of how the community wants to move forward.
Sure.
But, I, that shouldn't be something that we decide right now. That's why I want to say, leave that up to the committee to decide how they would like to move forward. But that's how I'm feeling right now, based on what I've read and how I went through it.
Sure.
So.
I can address a couple of those thoughts. Number one, our impression is that we're done after tonight. You know, because it was a temporary committee, and, you know, maybe that's not correct, but that's kind of how, we don't have any other meetings scheduled.
Yeah.
Let's say that.
Understood.
In terms of the community outreach, I felt, my personal opinion was, the committee went above and beyond, like worked really hard to get as many people, like they attended different types of events, different times of day, you know, virtual, in-person, different venues, you know, let's have a community group. I think, I was very impressed with what the community did. I mean, we had the call-in, you know, the show that Regina does. I felt like we, I don't know what else I would recommend, I guess is my point. Because I feel like, like, we gave like a ton of opportunities, and in terms of the survey as well, sometimes, I mean, I agree, I'd love to have another 200 people participate. You can always take these types of things a couple of different ways. People aren't very concerned about it, and so they're not going to tune in. They like think like, hey, they got a committee of nine people, they dug in, I'm, I'm fine with that. Or, you know, they have other priorities they're dealing with, where they're going to spend their, you know, plug-in time. But, I don't know what else I'd come up with. I don't know if you've got any other ideas of community engagement off the top of your head?
We know this, you know, you guys know this from your perspective as the council, and those from my perspective on the school board. Getting engagement is hard. It is, it requires a lot of work, it requires a lot of trial and error. You know, I say this, we just had a survey that went out, that actually did well, we had 1,100 folks, you know, participating, that's across three communities. And we know a lot of that was because of a lot of the big changes happening in the district at the state level. But as you know, when things are going well, people don't engage. They're focused on day-to-day life, and we understand it's hard to get folks to get excited about this and come and give us the feedback. To that point, though, I think, you know, it deferred to the council that, again, if you would like us to come up with questions that could eventually be used where you guys make a policy, or something goes on the ballot, I don't think that would be a problem. I think we could do that after the new year, but I think, again, that would require you guys to basically give us the charge again to go forward and do that. But like I said, for beyond that, the engagement piece, again, is hard. It is really hard around some of these issues that get people really excited about. And I understand completely the stipend piece, and those pieces there, again, you guys want to stay far with that as possible because, again, a conflict of interest, totally understand that. But I think there are ways that we can create at least some pulling data out of the report that can give context to community members to explain why it's important to make these changes, and then allow them to make that final decision at the ballot box in April.
Yeah, I think that's your ultimate check-in. Like, you can always put the, even if a lot of people haven't been involved, if you put the four things on in whatever way, right? You'll find out if people, how people feel. I mean, that's the ultimate test right there, because people are going to go in the ballot box, and you'll have however many, you know, 1,000 people, 2,000 people, whatever, will weigh in on it, and you'll have a public hearing on it, and some number of people will show up to that. And I don't know what else to do about that. In terms of writing the question on how the ballot would be, I mean, isn't that typically like the attorney needs to do that?
Yeah.
Because there's, there's a lot of, like, I don't think we're informed enough. Like, we can give, like, I think at this level, and then the village attorney or city attorney would have to kind of come up with language to match it. And you, you can decide whether you want to have, like, if you like the four, do you ask four separate questions? Or do you have it like, here's a group, and you either vote all four or none of the four? Like, that's obviously something you can do, and we're hoping, we discussed it at length, that we could, to help the whole perception of conflict of interest on the stipend, that you could hopefully stand behind, well, the governance committee recommended this. Like, that you all didn't come up with it.
Yeah.
Right? And obviously, you can do what you want. We were hoping that that would help.
I believe we have enough information in our report, that you can easily pull from that, create a one-pager to talk about why we made those recommendations.
Yeah.
And there's data behind it, so hopefully that, you know, folks want to learn, you know, in public sessions, or, you know, online, you put it on the main page, they can click on there to read more about that. That helps you give people context to understand why we came to the recommendations, and it's very easy to digest. Have it available, you know, if it does go to ballot, so folks can see it before they vote on it. And hopefully then people will be able to feel comfortable in making an informed decision, one way or another, on those proposed recommendations that the committee made.
Yeah. I agree with the ballot. I just, I didn't want to be, I didn't want to put my opinion out there with, you know, this is the only thing. Like, I want to make sure the committee had, had the opportunity to choose for itself versus me saying, this is what you should do. So, and I'll leave it to Regina and staff to decide. Where the, I was thinking, again, from just trying to take a little bit of workload off if that was possible. But again, I will leave that to Regina to handle or decide, or however you want to move forward on that.
Yeah, I think if the council decides that you want to take these four questions, or some portion of these four questions to the voters, we can then roll with that and figure out what those questions look like. And you would see those questions, because you folks approved the ballot ultimately, and so we would, and you see the draft ballot before you see the final ballot, so you would have time to look at that.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else?
Brian?
I don't know if this is a question for Regina, or for Steve as chair, or Steve as former president, frankly. It's my understanding as a member of the committee that we, we did rush to get a lot of public engagement, because we were concerned about that as well, so that we would be able to present on this date, because this was the last city council meeting that we had time to warn things for the ballot. So I just want, before we ask, before we, before we ask anybody to do any extra work, I'd like to understand what, better understand what the timing would be in order for us to approve and warn appropriately something moving on the ballot. Do we, to ask the short-winded question is, do we have time for that at all, anyway?
Yeah, so originally, the, I forget the document that we put together, putting this committee together, what that was called, but the deadline was November 1st. And really, that was to just give enough time to be able to go through the whole process, because it is a lot of process and a lot of steps. It also is different if we are asking voters an advisory question on the ballot, or we are specifically asking the voters to approve a charter change. Those have two separate processes and timelines associated with them. The charter change is the more, is the more complex of the processes. And if you folks remember, you've seen sort of the draft whole schedule already, we had to adjust the January 14th meeting to January 21st in order to accommodate the charter change warning, period. If they're not charter changes that we are asking, and I think some of these things are not charter changes, they're more advisory questions that you'd be asking the community. The timeline for that is to get those on the ballot, which is closer to a February deadline. Either way, I don't know that there is really a ton of time to do a lot more engagement to try to get a sense. And I think, I think ultimately, the best sense is putting something on a ballot and see what, see what everybody thinks, so.
One clarification. So the committee is recommending these all be in the charter, just for clarity. So.
Okay.
And some communities have that in their charter, so that's what we are recommending. And so then it doesn't need to be discussed at budget time every year, because it's just, it's in the charter.
Yeah.
And again, you guys can do whatever you want. That was the committee recommendation.
And certainly, Steve, the last one is charter change, right? One could, we could theoretically have done the first three, the ones around salary, as ordinances or just budget process, but we're, and again, to be clear, Elena and I abstain on these questions. I don't want to speak for Elena, but I believe that's true. She's nodding yes.
She did.
She did, yeah.
Yeah.
As the vote coner, I'll say.
But, yes, so hence the question, but if I understood your answer, Regina, then I agree that there's not a lot of time over the holidays for public engagement, but there's probably time to draft language for us to, to, for the council to decide on that for January 14th. Is that me understanding your charter change timing?
Yeah, January 21st.
21st, thank you.
Yes, yeah, and so now that I, thank you, Steve, for that clarification.
And we were very, and that was a very strong thing, to get it in the charter.
Yeah.
Again, you can do what you want, but our committee of nine wanted it in the charter.
Yeah. So these four questions, yeah, if, so if you four, if you folks, city council, want to move these forward as charter change questions to the community, we would get these drafted up with the city attorney to be on that January 21st council meeting, to warn.
So if I may ask, based on the current work, stream workload, do you think that that's feasible? Or, because, again, we are not being held to a particular deadline outside of the fact that if we want to hit this ballot, we have to do it in a particular way. But we could just run advisory questions, to which we will then later on have to do a charter vote. Because, you know, but that would give us, that's a way that we could do it, to gather information, and then we could do, you know, in the next round, we could do the actual charter vote, because we'll have that feedback from the advisory, which would give more time, if necessary, for staff to get this together.
I think that's going to confuse folks if you put it on two years in a row, as to why are we, why are we voting on this twice?
I don't disagree. I just want to, I'm just being, trying to be mindful.
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it.
Yeah, staff work, I wouldn't worry about that. If you want to put these four questions to the voters via charter change this year, no problem.
City attorney is going to work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Little hours.
Same?
Yeah, I just, the counselor stipend increase really makes me uncomfortable to even be discussing it, so. I don't know. I always go back to George, put it on the ballot.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Can I add to, like, that was also one of the reasons Scott, we wanted to be in the charter, because I think that has always been a struggle.
Yeah.
On my board, it's been a struggle for the council, back, you guys, too.
Yeah.
This, the way that we, as a entire committee, kind of put this together, it takes that conversation out, and it ties it to a standard. So that going forward, that's not something you guys have to worry about, because no matter, you know, the council that comes after all of you, they don't have to worry about this. They can, they can, you know, if the community decides this is how we want to do it, then that is a conversation that doesn't have to be worried about again, because it's codified in the charter, and that you guys can focus on the rest of the work and not have to worry about having to delve into these areas, which, again, I know that everybody uncomfortable to talk about that, because it already feels like, again, it's a huge conflict of interest. So that was one of the reasons why we were pushing for the charter change, so that it takes that, it gives relief to all of you guys not to worry about that.
Yeah. And to add in, if you do it as four separate questions, you're getting direct, the voter has direct control, because right now, people are voting on the entire budget, right? And that's just a thing in there that you have control over, right? So you're going to get, even if it's uncomfortable, people will let you know, right? It'll be clear, either they voted for it or they didn't, right? It's, you're taking it out of your hands and putting it in the voter's hands.
Yeah. So let me, let me ask one question, because if, if people haven't been paying attention to what the Governance Committee has been doing, and the conversation, following those conversations, or they choose not to do this, and, but they watch this, I just want to address this one thing. Because one of the major questions for the Governance Committee in doing this work was to, was whether or not this would improve engagement. Or, you know, in the, in the case of city counselors, right? Are we going to get more people who want to participate, who want to take on these tasks? Be a part of committees, be a part of the city council, whatever that is, so that they can, they can play a role.
Yeah, so if you look at the report, you'll see decisions that were considered, like the five counselors versus seven. All those types of things were made with that in mind.
Yep.
And, and so you, if you, again, I know it's like 100 pages or something, so it's a long read.
So I'm just asking for the brief verbally, so.
No, I understand, but it's, but it's in there, because, like, if you have a bigger board, then that's more people that got to run, and, you know, there's like all, we didn't say call them pros and cons, but consideration points for each of the different things. And the soft reforms that we say can get addressed, that kind of gets people, again, a whole different level of involvement and engagement. And, again, we were focused on structure, and we didn't want to do anything with the structural stuff that was going to certainly harm any engagement, right? And we think we arrived at a good, at a good place, after all the debate and boiling the ocean and all of that. And we think we arrived at a good, at a good place, after all the debate and boiling the ocean and all of that.
Yeah.
But we were very mindful of that, and, and I, I think I could say that the entire committee, each person was very interested in that. So we all had that. Like, we all came at it from a very different viewpoint, which was great. It was a nice diverse committee of experience and life perspective and the whole thing. But I think that was one of the big things everyone had, that they want to make sure people are involved in the community. So, all the decisions we made, we kept that in mind.
Absolutely. I'd say like, one of the softer forms that came out of there that we talked about, and there was a lot of them in there. Example would be like neighborhood assemblies that Burlington has, that'd be a great example. There, we were looking at ways to increase engagement and give the council a chance to look at that and determine of like, what do you want to go for with to bring ideas to the community, but how do they want to increase engagement? And give opportunities to community members across the city to be actively engaged, you know, in our community. So I think that, you know, from that engagement standpoint, I think there are a lot of good ideas in there, which again, allows you guys to decide if you want to do al committees, if you want to do public forums, whatever that might be. There's options out there for you to be able to look at that and try to gauge from community members, what level do they want to have an engagement with state council and what the future of the city looks like.
Yeah, I really appreciated that portion of the presentation, by the way. Because having all those additional points that we could consider and talk about, and hopefully bring to fruition at some point, I think is really valuable. So again, thank you for all that level of detail.
Appreciate it. I think every, every committee member to a person will at some point have different pieces of engagement that they want to make sure were brought to the forefront. I believe that pretty much everything was put in that report, because I think it was important to every single committee member.
Thank you.
Elaine, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I agree with Steve's presentation and the explanation of what we had regarding the public participation. I mean, it is always the thing that is most difficult to do. And I don't think we will ever reach a critical mass of public participation on any topic. So I think the committee did a good job coming to reasonable conclusions. And as the other said, you know, the ballot is the place where these things can be decided.
Thank you.
I'm just going to, I guess, reiterate everything that Marcus said. I appreciate all the work that you guys did on this. It's a lot. I appreciate, even though it was 100 pages, it was very thorough. And I enjoyed reading some of the comments that came from the interviews and stuff, so thank you for putting all that in there. And I also look forward to seeing what the, what the residents think on the ballot. And if there's no other comments from council, I'm going to open it up to public comment and then come back for further discussion. So, Risa?
Thank you, Amber. I'm saying, I know that you all know this, I'm saying this because it hasn't been brought up. We will be voting the middle of April. This is not something that will likely get to the legislature this year. The first they will be even considering it is 2027. And that's something to keep in mind of why we don't want to ask if this is something we should change to the charter and then need to do that the following year. It's just going to keep pushing it back and back. Thank you.
Thanks, Risa. Is there anybody else online? If you raise your hand? Anybody in the room?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll bring it back to us. We don't need to decide tonight as to what is going on the ballot. Or do you want us to, Regina? I mean, I think it's fairly straightforward, but that's just what I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it's fairly straightforward. It's those four questions that are under the changes in the report. But unless, unless somebody else thinks differently, we can just give those to you tonight.
Yeah, from my perspective, it would be helpful to know what the council would like to do tonight, if you're ready to make that decision.
Does that sound like what everybody was thinking, is that those four are the ones that in some iteration is going to be presented on the ballot? I see Elaine shaking her head. Folks in the room?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'd like to see the language before we vote formally put it on the ballot.
You will. Yes, you will.
You're going to see it multiple times.
Yeah.
Just checking that that's what you're, what we're doing.
Yep.
So then, yes.
Okay. We don't need a motion for that part, but there is a motion in the packet if somebody would like to.
So I will move that we accept the final report from the Governance Committee and dissolve the committee effective December 10th, 2025. We're going to thank all of the members for their hard work and very good work in this report, and your volunteer time spent on this very important city matter. So thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so huge 5-0. So, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Really.
You are dissolved. You can get back into the community.
It's just like the snow melting out on the.
Like we were never here. So, but again, thank you council.
Guys, Deb wants to say something. Go ahead, Deb.
I wanted to just give a shout out to Brad, because he really did go above and beyond to us. And he's been carrying this issue for a long time with us, so I just wanted to make sure he gets acknowledged for that.
He was invaluable. Absolutely invaluable.
Totally.
He is in the room and he's hearing you guys, so that's good.
Thank you, Brad. You were valuable, man. So.
He's invaluable and very sneaky.
Yes.
Okay, I'll see you all on YouTube.
I'd really love to also just thank everybody who was on the committee, Bethany, Deb, Thomas, Candace, forgetting people, but it was, Gabrielle, big commitment. Thank you very, very much for how seriously we took it and how well it went. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great experience. Thank you again, so.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Feel free to stick around for the rest of the agenda. Don't rush out too quickly. All right, discussion and consideration of the annual meeting engagement plan. So we had some discussion about this at our budget day, because we were running ahead of schedule, which never happens. But I'm going to let Ashley pick it up from there.
Yeah, so like you said, we talked at budget day about our engagement schedule, so I'm going to totally skip over that. We talked a little bit about our community meal, but we have a new idea that I'm going to talk to you guys about tonight, so I'm going to move forward from that, and then move right into the informational meeting. So the reason why we didn't talk about the informational meeting was because on Friday, we found out that we needed to move the annual meeting to the April 14th instead of the 7th. So that has shifted our whole schedule forward about a week. And so these dates aren't completely wrong, but they're not completely right either. So the earliest that we can start or can do the informational meeting would be March the 15th, which is a Sunday. So really, in truth, that March the 16th is the earliest that we could hold the informational meeting. We do have obviously the 18th, but in the memo, you do see that Regina had a conflict that night, so she's preferring that we don't choose that night. The next night would be the 23rd, which is another Monday that we could also do this informational meeting. All the other days, we have either meetings going on already, or we have a holiday that we cannot have hold meetings on that night. This gets us an informational meeting before the ballots go out. So the ballots go out on March 25th this year. And so that would mean that we'd be having an informational meeting before people get their ballots instead of after. We can look at later dates, because we have the 30-day window that we can do this in. But we do run into like other days with Passover, so we, we don't have a whole lot of dates. So these are the ones that I'm suggesting if you guys want to do the meeting before the ballots go out.
So let's just pause there for a second and reiterate. So your options for your informational hearing are Monday, March 16th, which are, because I'm talking about different dates than what's in this memo. Monday, March 16th, or Monday, March 23rd. The 18th is a possibility for sure, too. That's not my preference, but I can make it happen. If that's the only date that works for folks.
Kind of seems like we should do the earliest we possibly can, given ballots, to give you guys a little bit of, I don't know.
Ballot?
The ballots are going on the 25th, so what about doing the 16th?
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
Elaine? Yeah, okay. Brian?
I'm looking.
Okay. I'm hearing unanimous March 16th.
Oh.
Nope. What?
We'll take comment in a moment, though.
Well, I'm the moderator and I got a real meeting.
Would you like the moderator to participate in this conversation?
Uh, sure. Are you unavailable, moderator?
I wanted to comment that I'm available on both of those Mondays.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, we were going to check with you in just a minute, Steve, but since you jumped.
We were going to forget you.
I was going to, so. I'm not going to lie.
You're just going to have to move your whole life around, Steve, for this moderator position.
All right, March 16th it is. Going once, going twice, sold.
All right, that was easy.
Yep. Going to the hard topics.
Okay, so moving back to the community meal. So we had talked a little bit on budget day about doing this idea that we wanted to have a more, less formal meeting than we have done in the past, where we've had the community meal. We've done a formal presentation, and we've asked people to come up for comments. And we really wanted to move this to something that was more community-based and more, and less formal, basically. And so we had talked about doing the chili cook-off at EGRP, and also having the council there with posters about the budget, so that we could discuss it as well. I recently found out that there are some community members that are also wanting to do a community meal that's just a community meal. They have no, they don't want to do any kind of agenda. They just want to have an opportunity for people to come and visit and get to know their neighbors. They are also wanting to do it on the same night that we are holding our community meal. And so I thought that this is a great opportunity for us to combine these events. They are open to combining the events, as long as we're keeping it at this less formal event. And I think that we, it gives the community an opportunity to go to one event instead of having to choose between two events to go through on a Saturday. And I feel, wanted to press or present this idea to the council to see if this is something that you guys would be interested in moving forward with, or if you want to keep our event separate from this other event.
Council comments in the room?
So I will say I would like to keep them separate. Based on the email that we received from Bridget about the event, it really sounds like, first off, it's a multi, it's a multi-town event. So it's the town, it's everything, it's the Westford School District, essentially. And at the same time, again, I felt like when we were discussing the community meal, while we weren't, while we were trying to de-formalize it to a certain extent, we would be presenting some information, but then we, but we would be spending that time going from one table to the next and having, having some discussions, more one-on-one kinds of conversations versus us being on a big podium and, you know, people looking up at us, asking their questions. So I don't know that this, that this event, that the community is also having, feels like it's the right event for us. It may be a place where, okay, if we've got some posters, maybe we can have presence there in order to, because they're also asking, I know, for some potential committee presence. So maybe it's something that we are present at, but it doesn't feel quite right to me that we merge these two in this particular way. I think it'll, yeah. I think we should focus on the city and the city part of it. But anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Can I, sorry, Tim, can I just ask one clarifying question? I, it's not clear to me that it's a Essex-Westford School District geographic boundary event. Ashley, do you have any insight on that?
No, from my understanding, it is strictly a city event. They're just using the Essex-Westford School District cafeteria that night to host the event. It's mainly, the idea around this group is to create community events for city residents to meet your city neighbors. Not, this is not a school district event at all.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And that's, that's fine. I, I, I feel like if someone wants to have a community meal, block party, great, you're free to do that, but it's outside of what the municipality is trying to do. And I don't see a need or a reason to even attempt to merge these two.
Brian?
I mean, I'm a little bit involved in organizing the thing with Bridget. I would have, I'm not opposed to merging. But, you know, if it's not, but I, but I'm not opposed to separating them either.
Elaine? I'm a little iffy on it. My understanding was this was going to be a no-agenda community gathering. And we've done one or two of these before, and have had hundreds of people, basically because we were feeding them for free, but also because there were no speeches. So, you know, I, I am hesitant to combine these two events. Yeah. I've kind of gone back and, back and forth on it, and I think I fall in the camp of, of not wanting to. I think it's a great idea to do the community meal. I, I think, I'm super excited about that. It's something that I think it would be great if we participated in a, in a future event. I mean, not that we can't participate in it, we're all citizens of Essex Junction that night. But I think that, to your point, there, folks are not going to get some presentation on the budget, and that is our agenda, is we are, we're giving folks a presentation on the, on the budget. And so my, my position would be that we just keep them separate. And go with the plan that we discussed on budget day. But I, is there any other comment? I will open it up to public comment and come back to you.
Steve, Steve has a comment here.
Okay, go ahead. Steve, can you come up to the mic? Good, you're already doing that. Nevermind.
I was just curious what the, what drove the idea to have things different than the last two years? And I asked that because I thought the last two years were successful. I had a lot of people tell me afterwards, you know, that, that day and other times, that they really liked the idea. You know, they, it was a good sharing, they liked it before the budget was finalized. You know, they get to hear what everybody's saying, you know, it's good community, you know, all working together kind of thing. Yeah, we were on a stage. I'll agree with you on that. But the, anyway, so I, I'd only heard good things. So I was kind of curious. I wasn't at the day you talked about it. What was the, what was leading to you considers, considering something else?
I honestly can't remember at this point, but there was some discussion about just making it more of an inviting environment, and it was still a little bit of intimidating to have the, to have the type of setting that we had. And so hearing that, we kind of stepped back and said, yeah, it would kind of make sense to, to not make it as formal, but still get the same point across and, and, you know, meet with our residents. And so I think this has taken multiple iterations over the last couple of months or so. And budget day, this was kind of presented to us as a chili, chili, what is it called, the competition?
Yeah, the chili competition, yeah.
Whatever. You know, gathering with your neighbors and also talking about the budget. So it's more of an open house.
Sure.
Than it is, than it is a presentation where we're yelling, speaking at you guys, and like, and then you're asking for questions back and stuff. So I, I think the thought process was that it would be more engaging and, and less intimidating for those folks. But, I mean, it's a trial, right? We can always go back to the old, to the old version.
Well, yeah, no, I was just trying to figure out where, where it was coming from. And I know in the past, past couple of years, you've had like, because we'd be at the expo, you had that other room where you had all the department. So people could also do, you know, both versions at the same time. And I guess one question I had was, it sounded like, well, if there's a lot of people, then you'd have to be separate groups. Like, people would move around from group to group so that they could ask questions, or is that kind of how you were envisioning it?
It's been some of the conversation that we've had. I mean, I'll just simply say that like, for me personally, I, I agree with you, the, the event has been successful, but. I, I agree with you. The, the event has been successful, but, um, it has been concerning for me that there have been individuals who just haven't expressed themselves or felt that they could because it's still felt intimidating. I mean, Amber said this. And I've always felt a little uneasy about sitting above everyone. Like, I want to be at the same level.
Well, how do we, well, we can solve that.
Right, exactly. You know, but, so, so from that, like, these things, so, I, this wasn't something that we just talked about on Budget Day. This has been talked about now for a while. But, um, that's why I'm saying there's still a presentation to be done. We're just not gonna make it feel so serious. Like, not serious, but, you know, so formal.
Sure. No, I understand.
Yeah, the other thing that, um, came up along the way between sort of thoughts of maybe a little less formal from last year um, to this year, CBE is not available.
Okay.
So that really, um, sort of caused us to pivot quite a bit in terms of where we could host this event and kind of how to do it. Um, the other thing that kind of came to, um, comes into play this time around is we are anticipating that we may have a, um, bond vote for a public works facility. So trying to figure out ways to kind of potentially creatively do it in a space that, um, folks can get there. So still a lot of just different kinds of floating ideas, but one of the, um, I think real reasons from pivoting from the, how it's worked at CBE is because CBE is not available.
Okay, no, no, that's, well, that's important. So, and just again, as a citizen question, so if we already know there's a community meal and there might be a couple hundred people be there, and certainly some organizers that might want to be involved in the other. Are you going, is the council considering trying to pick a different day to maximize attendance? Or you can only do so much?
I would think we would.
So this is the tricky.
You can only do so much.
Yeah.
The window that we have for this meeting is very small, um, on how it works between, um, waiting to a point where the council feels comfortable with the budget, but before finalizing the budget because it is that sweet spot that we've been trying to do this event in that space. So we really have a very short window and we've, um, narrowed down to the 31st as really a day that is kind of one of the only days that can work, especially if we want to stick with this concept of a Saturday. So that's, that will be the tricky, tricky part.
Okay, and, and.
And unfortunately, we picked that day and then they picked their day.
No, I know, I get it.
They just both happened to align on the same day, unfortunately, because of this availability of the school.
Sure, things happen. And then my last clarifying question is, so if we do what's currently proposed, then you won't need me to moderate anything for that date, just the informational meeting? Or would you have a role for me somehow in like the table discussions or something? I'm guessing not, but I'm just throwing it out there to ask since I've moderated the other way the last couple of years.
Yeah, so I think we still don't know yet.
Okay, that's fine.
EBD.
Yeah, as we, as we figure it out, but yeah.
Okay.
But we do appreciate your input on this because, you know, again, you have been an important part of this process.
Yep, no, no, that's fine. And I, I mean, everybody's bringing up good points, so I, like you said, you can try something and try something else next year.
Yep. Thanks, Steve. Risa?
Thank you. Um, I don't know anything about this other community meeting, other than what I've heard right now. But I can't help but think that if members of our community feel that they want to have a meal to get together and know your neighbors, if it's combined, it's gonna feel like a timeshare meeting where, you know, yes, you're invited to this meal, but we're locking the doors and you're not leaving until you hear about the budget. So I, I, I just have to point that out, that it's, I can't imagine how you could combine it. Unless, you know, maybe one is at lunch and one is at dinner or something, but this timeshare thing is just like, oh my goodness. Thank you.
There is, I think that is the, the, right now, one is at lunch and one is at dinner.
Yeah.
So ours will be a lunch, theirs will be a dinner.
Yes, right now, that's how it's, it's scheduled. And I do, I will say the one that they're planning on doing, they didn't want us to have like a speech or anything. So it wouldn't be, it would be, the idea is if we could possibly do the committees, um, like we did at last year's event, and we would almost be like a committee member. So we could have our information at, uh, in that area as well. But then you would have an opportunity to sit at a table and have conversations. Um, they're planning to have different icebreakers. And one of the ideas that was pitched, um, when we were talking about, um, doing this together was having one of the icebreaker questions be a budget question. Um, so that was, that was the idea around having, we would still have a presence there, but we wouldn't be the presence there, um, during this event. So just clarify that. We're not gonna do a bait and switch type thing where you come to eat and you have a presentation. But if it's not something that the council's interested, we won't go in that direction. This was just another option that I wanted to bring to the table.
I would like to change a little bit of what I said earlier because it really is just a city event at night. I'm still not, I still think they should be separated, but I'm totally willing and I'll make myself available to be at both. You know, because of the fact that I think, again, any place the community is, we should be. So let's go do, let's go do that. And, um, I'm totally fine with that. Because again, in the conversations that we've had about it, I was really looking forward to having more kind of one-on-one conversations, get the ability to those people who were more silent in our previous meetings to hopefully tease some things out or find ways to open up that dialogue. And so if we can do that with both groups, I'm happy to do that. But, so I'll say that for myself.
So the question on the table is, is whether we're going to merge the two or go forward with what we had planned on Budget Day. So I'm hearing the general consensus is that we're going to keep them separate and move forward from Budget Day. I don't think we need a motion for that, but I just want to confirm that, that's, the majority is leaning in that direction.
That is my preference.
And I'm hearing four to one, may, maybe a slight half on Brian.
Yeah, I mean.
He could go either way.
Yeah, I could go either way. It sounds like Marcus could too now, but that, that still gives us consensus as you summarize.
Okay. Uh, Regina, you don't need anything from us just in, just that we're the answer, right? You don't need a motion from us?
No, don't need a motion. Um, I just.
Need a location.
I think we're gonna, if, if both of these things are happening on one day, I think we are gonna hear a lot of, um, frustration from the community. So, uh, just trying to kind of, uh, sort through that in my mind, but, um.
If their frustration is that we're engaging with them more, I'm okay with that. We should be engaging with them more. So.
Yep. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I am gonna move to the Budget Day feedback discussion then. Not sure who wants to take and start this. I guess we had, I'll, I'll start it, I guess. And then you can pick up Regina if you want, but, um, we had, we had a pretty good discussion at Budget Day because we had a lot of time that we were able to discuss what the presentations were that we were getting. Um, I know that we didn't discuss everything. Um, Elaine would like to talk about, um, the human services concept to the budget. Um, so I guess I'll throw it to you, Elaine, first, if you want to just hit that topic.
Sure. So, um, thanks Amber for making time. And my apologies, I am in Los Angeles. There's ambulances and police cars going by my hotel and I'm exhausted. So my apologies, I'm all over the place. So back in 1987, residents of the Town of Essex at Town Meeting made a decision to secure, to set aside a dollar amount equal to 1% of the annual general fund budget to give to organizations that provide services to the community. And that has been going on ever since. And Essex Junction residents were also contributing to that, um, 1% because we were, um, included as residents of the town as well. So when we separated, the town continued to do their 1% human services allocation. But the Essex Junction residents no longer participate in it. So we are not contributing to the human services fund anymore. And last year, the Town of Essex changed their process a little bit to put it as a separate line item on the ballot so that residents are approving it separate from the budget. Up until last year, it was just a line item in the budget. And it has evolved into, you know, 1% of the town budget is $150,000 and approximately. And it has evolved into a process with an application, uh, an application window and a committee that reviews applications and makes awards. And if you go to their website, um, and in fact, I'll, I'm happy to drop the website link in the chat. They have a really excellent system that, um, Tammy Getchel has, has put together and Andy Watts. Um, oh, I can't, I can't chat because, oh, maybe I can. Just let me chat. Oh, just there. I just want to put the link in the chat for folks to see. Um, I can probably do it. It, it has become a very organized, very thoughtful process and they have got it, it's, it's, it's a machine now. They know exactly what to do. They have a whole excellent system and process. Considering what Vermonters are dealing with right now, considering, you know, cuts to SNAP benefits, um, immigration, folks who are, immigration raids, folks who are, um, not receiving any benefits that they used to receive and the incredible increase in volume at places like Ob Dots and Heavenly Pantry. I was hoping we could have a discussion about putting a question on the ballot about setting aside 1% of the Essex Junction general fund budget to use as human services grants. And I definitely have been approached over the years, uh, in recent years from organizations since we've separated, asking if we do such a thing. And then, um, we've also entertained individual one-off requests for grants in small sums. So we don't have a process for addressing these individual requests from organizations that are serving Essex Junction residents. So I'm not sure how familiar every board member is with the town's human services grants process, but I did want to bring this up. I would really like us to put this on the ballot and let the residents decide if it is something they wish to do. I know that a lot of people are contributing to nonprofit organizations on their own, considering how tight things are right now. I believe our residents would respond positively to something like this. And especially if they knew that they actually had been participating in it since 1987 and haven't been since 2022. So I'd love to hear folks' thoughts and whether or not, um, this is something you'd like to pursue putting on the ballot. I myself would like to advocate it in the strongest possible terms. Thanks.
Thanks Elaine. Comments in the room?
So I, I will say, and Elaine, I totally understand and I appreciate, um, the thought on this. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed. I think my, my struggle is, again, dealing with the increase, um, that we're looking at and then, um, you know, coming back and adding another, another 1%. I think in thinking about it, for me, I felt like I would almost feel more comfortable at this particular point of figuring out if we can come up with a process by which, on an annual basis, in review of the previous year, uh, and the unf, you know, the remaining unfunded balance, right? The un.
Unassigned.
Unassigned fund balance, sorry. Um, if we look at that and declare, you know, we come up with a process by which we say, every year we review what that amount is and we agree on a particular percentage of said amount. Therefore, we use that in order to, uh, fund this, um, so that it doesn't impact the residents with a higher tax rate, um, but again, accomplishes the, the goal that we're trying to get to here.
Can I respond to that or?
Yeah, go ahead. Yep.
Uh, thank you. That's a great suggestion. Um, as far as I can tell, at the moment, we don't have unassigned fund balance. We are, we are trying to build up our unassigned fund balance. And fortunately, we heard at the last Budget Day that it's at but 12% now, which is awesome. Uh, that's our reserve. I don't know that we were in the position to have an unassigned fund balance. And often, you know, I'm trying to remember, I was gonna try to look up on the city website, if we have an unassigned fund balance policy. So, um, I think that's an interesting concept. I'd be interested in exploring that, but I'd want to know all, you know, what we have in place now. And the other concern I would have about that is that would make this human services fund opportunity fluctuate. Do we have balance this year? Do we not have balance this year? It could be multiple years that we don't have any money to give. We might choose to use that money to buy down the tax rate and which would be, which would be the choice, you know, at that given time. So I think that's an idea worth exploring, but I, I definitely have reservations about it.
Anybody else?
I, I'll say, it's, yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm so torn. Like, I'm looking at, we're looking at a $500,000 increase on a, it's a 4.4% property tax increase where there's so many people that we live with that are already struggling with their school property taxes being up 30 or 40% in the last three years. You know, uh, we're looking at preliminary estimates of another 9% utility rate increase. And then we're kicking them with the $125,000 capital that goes into the stormwater fund, which is gonna roll in. So if we look at the proposed increase sheet from the budget packet, on average, they're looking at a $221 increase just from us. The governor's come out and said that the school property tax is gonna be probably in the realm of 12%. And we all know that our reappraisal is in the trash. So our rate's automatically gonna be higher than that. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I, I have, I have a hard time at my house paying my tax bill. It, it's painful and it's not, you know, it's, it's $560 a month. It has to go right into a savings account for me to be able to afford to live in my house, right? And that's, wasn't too many years ago, that was a car payment plus, you know? Uh, and so I, I mean, I, I get what Elaine is saying. I really, like, it would be nice to be able to give. But I don't know that it's our position. Like, our rolling stock fund is short. Our, we were just talking with Regina earlier about all the trucks at Public Works that are broken uh, and, you know, everything that goes along with that. Uh, I, I saw them come through my neighborhood in a whacker doing the sidewalks the other day that I know broke because it broke at the bottom of my hill. Uh, there is like, there's so many, we have so many needs as a municipality right now to even take care of our own house. I just don't know. Like, I, I don't know.
No, I definitely understand that, Tim, and what the, the difficult.
Saying one way or the other, I'm just kind of talking through it, you know, so like, I hope you.
Yep, no, the, the difficulties we're having in the city with the many things that you very accurately listed off are, are definitely, you know, exacerbated in families in our community who have even less. And that's why I'm proposing doing this as a separate ballot item so that the residents can think about it separate from the budget and it would not be an automatic increase in the budget. It would be a completely separate decision. So, and then year to year, the residents can either, they can either decide to do it every year or we can do it every three, like we do the, uh, economic development, uh, penny. So I want to emphasize that I'm not asking to just add a line item to the budget. I am asking us to put a question out to the public of whether they want to contribute to the human services that are happening in our community.
Brian?
Yeah, no, I think I support this. Certainly support putting on the ballot for, uh, for our residents to decide.
Um, I was, I was going to ask, and I think you just answered this, Elaine, whether it was gonna be an advisor question or a charter change or it sounds like it's sort of a a little mini budget that we're putting on the ballot. Great.
Yeah, just like the penny tax for the economic development.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. I did, I didn't want to say something, and I'm sorry about this, Tim, but um I I want to correct something that you said. Raising the appraisals does not raise your taxes. Well, um, it's not, yeah, but, okay, great, because I didn't want to, I didn't want to give the public that impression because as your-
And I think, right, I what I was trying to say is the education tax is up thirty or forty percent. I don't believe I made any reference to reap-
Yeah, regardless of your appraisal. If your appraisal goes up, the tax rate goes down in part.
Well, the government line is if the reappraisal goes up, your taxes go down. But having lived through the two thousand eight reappraisal, we know that the commercial property was devalued and that was transferred over to the residential taxpayer who then saw a doubling of their tax bill.
And we do know that we have a smaller grant list going into this, into this cycle because of the utility hit that we took. So or so there is some impacts that, and again, we don't, we don't know yet. But I I think there are-
While it's true, we don't know what's going to happen, I do not want us to give the impression to the public that if your appraisal goes up by twenty percent, your taxes go up by twenty percent.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, not at all.
I agree.
Yeah, no, no.
Fair enough. And yes, I I'm, I am aware, the public may or may not be aware that the the grand lit devaluation due to the dam, right? That's that's a separate issue, right? So has nothing to do, has nothing to do with the appraisals that are going on now. So.
So one thing that I just wanted to add is we had some discussion at Budget Day about the prioritization list. The and we referred to it as mud, the mud portion, mud color position. I knew that was gonna come back around, so, you know. Um, this particular topic was added to the list in that mud portion as not being prioritized yet because it hadn't been on the list before the retreats. So it is now on the list, but with not, without a priority. So just as part of this conversation, I just want to reflect on the fact that we have not prioritized this as a priority for the city council, um which means that this is not on the um agenda of any of the staff. And so I just want to be mindful of the fact that if we do put this on the ballot, it does get approved. There still needs to be policies and procedures that need to get created that will be required to be done by staff. And I don't know if you want to speak to this, Regina, or not speak to this at this point, but you know, what that impact of that is um on the other priorities that we have previously set.
Um, thank you. Um, I think uh we talked a bit on Budget Day about how um in a most perfect system and world, prioritization of everything would happen in the retreat and then we would get to this process and hold it all firm and solid. Um, uh, I know that's not reality. I know things that, things will come up. And uh generally, we need to be able to um uh be flexible enough to address emerging needs or or other things that come up. Um, I think we um it, the council wanted to put this on a question to the voters. Um, I think we would have enough lead time to figure out how and when to actually pull that all together and and make it happen. Um, I think the interesting thing is if very specifically the the request is to mimic what the town is doing, um, a lot of that work is kind of in place and we could sort of rework it. Um, but, you know, I I think this type of concept brings in a whole other um world of possibility of what other types of things could we do that are not necessarily precisely what exactly what the town is doing. Um, is there more direct assistance to residents through some other way that is uh um more direct funding through a participatory budgeting process? You know, there's sort of like a whole, all kinds of different things that we could think about um that could take more time and more effort to put that into place. But um I don't, I don't feel comfortable myself right now saying absolutely not. We didn't think about this in the spring. It's not a top priority. Um, I think if this is something that you folks wanted to put out there and if the community wanted to um do it, we could figure it out.
So for clarity, based on, based on that, because again, i- if this were an advisory question, like I say, go nuts. Like, you put it, put it on the ballot. But it being a budget question, we go back to the conversation we had earlier um about the timing. And I feel like we have to have some of that process flushed out. Um, or fleshed out? I can't remember which one it is. Anyway. You know, through through that process. So not only are we saying, hey, this is something we're doing, this is, but we need to be able to say how we're going to do that. Um, and so that goes back to, okay, is that something that staff can do within the time period that we're talking about? The other thing that I will say, and and I do appreciate what the town is doing, but I I, every time a committee is brought up, I think back to the discussion that we had not that long ago about committees. And we ended up at the status quo um because of the fact that we just don't have the ability to man, sorry, to staff um those particular, you know, another committee or committees for pieces that we have said that we really want, economic development, housing, things like this. And this would be another. So to that, I still end up in this strange um contrad- I don't know, contradiction or the, you know, this strange place about it. But again, um, that's why I was thinking about, like, again, how this is. I started to focus on the funding because that was the first thing that came to mind when I, when I talked about it and then reading it and thinking about it. Um, that, yeah, that committee just, it kind of stood out for me in that particular regard. So anyway, I guess I go back to my my first question, which is, in the timeline, could staff even consider what that would look like? Or should we just do this as an advisory?
If I could clarify or answer some of your questions, Marcus, I think it might be helpful.
Yeah.
Um, so I was on the town select board when the process was um sort of revamped. And uh Tammy Getchell, who is the town administrator, uh she handles it. And it's an ad hoc committee that is um in operation for probably two months. And, you know, Tammy collects the applications. The form is on the town website. It's a PDF with very, or it's a form. It's a very specific requirements that the organizations have to fill out. And she brings the applications to the committee. It's a three-person committee. It's Tammy. It's a select board member, and I think it's a volunteer from the community. They review the um award, they review the applications, they make a recommended list of awards, and then they bring it to the select board for approval. So I, it's a, it's an ad hoc committee. It is not a standing year-long committee. And um now that I said, like I said, they have it down to a science, it seems to be a a system that works very, very smoothly.
Pulled up their website. It says, uh, December, applications are accepted. February fifteenth is the deadline for applications. March and April, applications are reviewed by the committee appointed by the manager. May, proposed contributions are presented to the select board for approval. And then in June, the approval, approved contributions are issued. So December to June with the, it's on March, April, May, June.
Right, and most of that is with the staff, the the one staff member who handles it, and then the committee comes in for the vetting of the applications.
Yeah, and I think the only thing I would add, um, I think, Marcus, to your question is, um, if this were something that was prioritized by the council in the retreat, I would then be able to sort out which staff person could take this on and do this versus what other things they have or what other priorities or things that you would come through that process. So from that aspect of it, um, I'm I'm doing that step outside of that kind of a higher prioritization piece in terms of uh which of our staff resources are gonna take that on. Um, and I don't, I'm not saying that to say we shouldn't ask this question or not, but that is where, that's a component of it that um we're missing.
Yeah.
That, sorry, I just remembered I had one other point I wanted to make about this. Um, and again, not to encourage or discourage one way or the other, but because of the reappraisal, the one, the penny on the ec- for the Economic Development Fund, when we ask that question again in twenty twenty-seven, um, that will produce, more than likely, that will produce a very different dollar amount. It opens the opportunity to think about that and perhaps split that into two separate programs or something, or just think cre- more creatively um before we ask that question next year. And we, the reappraisal will be done, so we will be able to predict predict what that um penny actually produces as a dollar amount.
Hmm, okay.
Um, any public comment?
No one's in the room.
Okay, not seeing any hands online. All right, uh, how's folks feeling? Sounds like everyone's all kind of all over the place. Um, so I guess I'm gonna start with putting it on the ballot and ju- forget like the rest of it is as, who is in favor of putting it on the ballot this year?
I'll simply say that I I'm not sure that at this particular moment in time, I feel that it's right to be put on the ballot as, as a, you know, as a must-do, as a, as a uh advisory? Yeah, absolutely. But I I think we have to have some process done. And if that, and it sounds like what we need to do, if if we're going to do that, we then need to have a conversation about our priorities. And I don't know that we're prepared to do that right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybo-
So it's kind of a no?
I'll agree with that.
Brian, you're, you wanted to put it on?
I'd put it on the ballot, yes.
Okay. Elaine wants to put it on the ballot, so it sounds like I'm the one that's gonna make this decision. That's cool.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, so can, Regina, can you remind me, what is the absolute latest day that this, the council can talk about adding things to the ballot before you have to get the language drafted and ready to go?
Uh, excellent question. Um, let me see if I can find that fairly quickly.
The the reason I'm asking is if we have time, could we invite Greg Duggan or Tammy Getchell to come talk to us about their process so that we know exactly what we're getting into? Or perhaps ask them to send an email over that with their thoughts? I'm not opposed to that. From my perspective, that's not the issue. My, my, my bigger concern, I think this is important, um, but I want to spend the time on it. I feel like it's a little rushed um to try to to get this on the ballot this year without having the, all of this discussion, the policies and procedures, and I get it. We could totally just plagiarize whatever the town is doing. I totally get that. But then as Regina was talking, I was like, oh, yeah, what about things like the Housing Trust Fund that we've talked about? Like, the, these other buckets of money and stuff and and, you know, weighing the, weighing the impact as to whether this is the right move versus, you know, maybe, you know, then Regina mentioned about the splitting the funds and stuff. So I think for me, I'm just kind of on the fence and and probably could get there, but I can't, I don't know that I can get there today. Um, and so that's for me, that's the biggest concern. I I can totally understand that, and I guess the only thing I would say to sort of encourage you all to think about this a little differently is that for forty years, we did do it. We were paying in every year. And since twenty twenty-two, when we separated, we stopped paying in. And so we're no longer doing anything to benefit human services organizations. And occasionally, we have a one-off request come in that we decide to honor or not. So I just want to remind folks that we definitely have done this before. Sorry for the ambulances. I don't know if you can hear them.
No, not at all.
We can, we're good.
You can hear it here. Oh, my God.
Honestly, I'm looking at the building height behind you.
Yeah, me, me too with jealousy.
But at any rate, it's just a reminder that this has some, is something that Essex Junction residents have paid for for decades, and we're not doing it now. And so this is an opportunity to get back in the habit. I do think that, you know, to your point, um, it wasn't the budget. It was a line item in the budget that, as we just discussed with our own com- with our own compensation, there's like, you're approving a budget. You're not approving like, oh, I'm now putting one percent towards human services. Granted, the process is different now, but when we were contributing as a town member, that's how, that's how it was. And so I'm not sure that I hear you and I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure that the public is going to necessarily hear that and understand it because, again, they were voting on a budget. They weren't voting on that piece of it. So it's an important pe- piece, um, but people are just voting on a budget. They have no clue what they're voting on half the time, so. Um, but Regina, did you find that?
Yes, so, um, this, and uh, let me just say that I um am giving you the answer as best as I know it today. We're still finalizing this new agenda based on the new annual meeting date. But, so I think February eleventh is when we're gonna bring you the draft warning for the ballot. On February twenty-sixth, you have to finalize that. So in my mind, on the eleventh, when I bring you a draft warning, I want you to be able to clearly see everything that's on there um with the language as best as we've reviewed it um to date. So really, February eleventh meeting would be kind of the week before that, we would really need it. If that's helpful.
Do folks want to basically table this portion of the conversation and bring it back at a later time and to have additional information about the the program as to whether they want to put it on the ballot this year? And I'm mostly saying that to him and Marcus, because I know Brian already said he wants to put it on the ballot.
Well, no, if I, if I may, um, at, what I'm hearing them saying is similar to what I said about the governance questions was, let's get the language and look at it before we decide what to do moving forward, so.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, again, we're, it's a matter of there, I think there's a number of things here, and I don't want to repeat myself again, but um I think I'm okay coming back and having another thoughtful discussion around this. Um, again, from the standpoint to, you know, as we're having this discussion, this has been a very valuable discussion. I really do appreciate it. Um, this is not currently in our packet spelled out for the public either. So, you know, in the presentation to the community, we're kind of having the sidebar conversation in regard to feedback from Budget Day, but this isn't, but the discussion we're having right now is because of that. But I will say, this should probably be a memo in the packet that spells this out in a way so that the public understands um the goal. And then, you know, we start to talk about some process that we can then di- digest and work through to see if we can get to a point where there's something that we could then find language to put on the ballot.
So I would say if we could do um a memo and discussion in January, does that make sense, Regina?
Yeah.
Okay. Does, are every, everyone's okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for being willing to add this to our discussion. It's imp- and I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for bringing it up.
So that was the only one that I was aware of, that anybody had any comments um that directly stemmed from Budget Day. Does anybody else have anything that they want to talk about Budget Day specific before we move on to the next topic?
Um, I would like to say that I really did appreciate the day. You know, in having now participated in a couple of them, um, it was nice to get, have that presentation. And, you know, I'm sure that it felt like for some that it was, it was very, it could be fast at times, but, you know, again, it was nice to be able to have this information presented to us so that then we can go back, have, go back to our reading, go back to our analysis, and then consider how this moves forward. So um, I thought it was well done this year, so thank you to staff for, for all the work.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't have anything at this point.
I have the question that I emailed you, Regina, about um how to, how to itemize the election spending so that we can
Yep.
so that if we, so that we can budget for two elections if that's necessary.
Yep.
Yeah, and that'll come back to us at a later time. Uh, okay. Elaine, you're good? Okay.
Yes, all good.
All right, so we're gonna move on to talk about postmarks and tax bills. Gina, you wanna take this one?
Yes. So page 112 in the packet? Okay, um, so this memo um has a bit of detail in here um as to why we moved uh away from accepting postmarks as on-time payments. Um, and we did that both on the utility side and uh on the tax side. It has come to our attention that because our specific charter language doesn't include um method and time of payment, it reverts back to the more specific state statute language which does allow for postmarked payments to be considered on time. So essentially, what that means is a, something can come in the mail beyond the 15th, but it was postmarked earlier than the 15th, and so then we um we can count that. Uh, it creates a bit of a um struggle and uh a lot of reversing of penalties that have to be put into place. So I would recommend that we um not accept postmarked payments, but in order to do that, we have to ask the voters um for that ask because uh our charter doesn't allow it. So that's the question for you all. If you want to pursue this as a question and move um, move this further down the road, if you do, um, as we've talked about a few times tonight, I would work with the city attorney to figure out exactly what that question would be and phrase. And, yeah.
Yeah. So. But would the, okay, so go, if you don't mind, if you go back to what you said before, cuz you said there, there's a number of reversals, that's because of the fact that right now, as it stands, we're in a situation where it's reverting to that state statute. So that's gonna happen. That's not because, I'm thinking about this, like, yes, we could change this charter language, but that's not the reason that these reversals are happening. It's happening because of the circumstances at this moment.
So I think by accepting postmarks, which we are now doing because we've realized that we were a bit out of order.
Okay.
By accepting postmarks, we have to apply the, a penalty um as soon as, like, the next day.
Right.
So by accepting postmarks, we could continue to get those things coming in the mail for quite a while. And so then we have to reverse the penalty because we are ultimately getting the payment that we weren't anticipating getting, and then have to go in and reverse that penalty back.
Okay.
An, an important note here is that you don't receive mail here on Thursdays. Right? So.
Well, I think if you ask most residents, they'll, they wonder where their mail is generally.
Most of the time. And the thing that struck me is that we regardless don't accept postmarks on utility payments. So I think we should probably be uniform across the board, right?
Right.
If we're not accepting, cuz that only, it, again, it just stands to create confusion. So uniformity would be the way to go, my thought.
Yeah.
And if, and if we put this on as a ballot item, we are, we are asking the public
Right, it's gonna be quite valid.
Which is the general theme of this conversation this evening.
This evening, the whole evening.
So.
Yeah.
Um.
Can you give me an indication of the number of tax payments that uh, that um arrived more than three days later um so that I can get an idea of how much work this is for staff?
Um, I know that we waived, slashed, reversed eight accounts at this last cycle when we realized we were out of order. I can't tell you beyond that.
But it's not, but it's not 400?
No.
Okay, it's, it's, so, so um, okay. So yes, I, 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 I have sympathy for the staff having to go in and um, and do some extra work because, because we have a terrible postmaster gender. That sucks. I'm sorry. That said, um, one, we, we've determined that the law says we have to hold the, the, the postmarks, and we're making that mistake.
Yeah.
Two, I appreciate the hard work that Jess and all and you have done to, to correct that mistake now that we've discovered that, our, our error. Three, I mean, I think that if you postmark your, if you postmark uh your bill on time, it should be honored, right? Um, so I don't think, it, it doesn't sound like it's a, uh, doesn't sound like a massive burden um on, on staff to do this 20 times. You know, so I'm, I, you know, so I, I don't, I don't think that we should make this change. I, I think that we should honor the state law and make, make an internal policy change to make the correction.
Elaine, do you have any thoughts, comments?
I agree with Brian. I'm not in favor of this change because as a member of the BCA or the Board of Abatement, you know, frequently, we've had folks come to us and say, but I mailed it on time. And it, it is a, it is a common practice with most other bills. Um, I, I mean, I could be wrong about that, I'm making an assumption, but I think it's an expectation that people are making their best effort, and it is not their fault if the US Postal Service is behind. Um, you know, if they mail us a check, an envelope, and there's no check in it, or they mail us a check that bounces, or they mail us a check that's not the exact amount, like, that's all different. Um, and I realize that there is workload that we're talking about for the staff, and it's a real inconvenience working between two departments to deal with each time this happens. But I think it's an expectation of the public that if it's postmarked on time, it counts. And I know that's the case with my mortgage, um, and, but I'm also cognizant of if our utilities are done differently. I mean, I am concerned about that too. The consistency from bill to bill is important, but I just think folks have an expectation that if they make their best effort to get it in the mail, that they're not gonna be penalized if it doesn't show up, and that's out of their control.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna take Reese's comment, and then I'll bring it back to us.
Thank you. Um, I was all set to argue that, you know, we absolutely need to abide by postmarks. Even though federal and state taxes no longer do, we really should. I received mail on Monday for the first time in two weeks. I get packages, I don't get mail. There were four letters and cards in there that were stamped. One from, one was local, one was New Jersey, one was Iowa, and one was Washington State. None of them were canceled. None of them had postmarks. So the post office is not being thorough about postmarking mail anymore. And it's just something to keep in mind. What are you gonna do then? It, it's, it's bizarre. I, I mean, I know, there's nothing we can do about the post office. But it's just, I was just looking one after another. I was like, this is crazy. And it sat there for two weeks cuz I knew when they were supposed to arrive because of um informed delivery. So postmarking may be, you know, I don't know, gone the way of the penny or something. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a valid point. I think the way that we deal with the mail system is that there are 10 other ways to get us your tax bill payment and your utility payment, which do not involve putting it in the US Postal Service. That's, I think that's the only other way around this, unfortunately.
Yeah, including, just so folks are clear, including coming to the building at any 24 hours, any point, putting it into the um lockbox with, so, without extrophy.
Yeah.
Which I do regularly. It's so easy.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we've, we have heard in
Just a second, Marcus. Jess, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to uh second Risa's point about the postmarks. We're seeing a lot of things coming into the office without a postmark on them, so we have no way to verify that something was mailed in time. And also to Brian's comment about the workload, uh, it does create a massive amount of work for two departments who are already strapped. Um, and also, it's creating manual processes outside of our automated processes, which opens up a lot of room for error. Human error. So I, I, as a staff person who've worked in multiple communities where postmarks have been accepted or not, I would strongly advocate for, you know, like Amber was saying, there are so many other options for payment methods. Again, 24-hour Dropbox at the city office, um, I would really strongly advocate for doing away with the postmarks being accepted as on-time payments.
Is there any ability, um, I don't wanna get too much into the weeds, but, but is there any ability to, I know there's a fee associated with, like, if you pay via credit card or something, I think that's what I'm hearing. I don't, my mortgage pays my taxes, so I have no idea what's happening, but is there any flexibility to move to some other vendor or something that would prevent that from happening, which would then encourage more people to use those services if they're not getting paid, if they're not getting dinged with it? I'm assuming the answer is no, but I just thought I'd ask it. Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, unfortunately, there's not because that's how the merchant processors make their money.
Yep.
There are other communities who, who've moved to covering the fees and not charging them, but all that does is increase the rates in the long run, like, so unfortunately, there's not really a, there's not a free way to get a rat, to get a pay, credit card and direct debit payments processed online.
Okay.
Regina, what if we provided some additional hours the week up to the deadline? And I say this from the standpoint of, we have our standard hours, but and only because of the fact that I've seen this come up in our um Board of Abatement meetings on occasion. I, I, we had this at one of our more recent ones where the individual wasn't comfortable using the, the lockbox because of the fact they wanted a receipt, because again, they were trying to track that handoff, right? And again, acknowledging the fact that you can put anything into the mail, and you're absolutely right, Risa, I've seen it, it's happened to me. There's no postmark. How are you supposed to judge? So could, maybe it would be simpler, maybe it would be more accessible for residents if we provided some additional after office hours so that people could come in and drop those things off? Or like on tax day, you know, we're open some additional hours so that people can come after work? Maybe that would make it better and easier for people? I don't know.
It's a great question, great suggestion. Um, I can't speak to that right now, um, but uh certainly can think on that and circle back on it.
Jess, go ahead.
Um, one additional item to Marcus's point or question, um, if people mail or drop off a payment, they can request a receipt that their payment was received, and we can mail that to them, we can email it to them. So there is still that ability to confirm that payment was received.
So wha- so when they put it in the Dropbox, put a note with it saying, please send me a receipt, essentially?
Yeah, yeah, and I think there might be, I can't remember how our bill template is set up. I know there are sometimes options where you can select, please mail a receipt to me or send a receipt. That's something I can look into to see how the city's bill template is set up, and if it's not there, we can add it.
Okay.
Nice. Brian?
Uh, yeah, the, I'm interested, if I could get a clarification on what state law says when there is no postmark on a deliver, delivered, if, if, if it's delivered, um, if, if then that it defaults to when it arrives? Um, cuz that's gonna involve some interesting clarifications. I know if you were to mail your taxes on April 15th, and you didn't wait for them to have a postmark on that, they would be marked late by the IRS. I know in some, in states where, Vermont's not one of them, I know, but in states where you vote and the postmark matters, if you don't wait and if you don't go to the post office and wait for them to put the stamp on it, and, and it arrives too late, you're SOL. And I know when I paid, I, I paid my uh Texas property taxes um from Australia, and because I knew the Texas law, I knew it had to arrive first. That's on me, right? I, when I voted in New York, like, it had to, like, from Australia, it had to arrive at the, the, the Manhattan Board of Elections before Election Day. That was on me. I found, I, I, so I used FedEx for one and used Australia Post like a month in advance for the, for the other, right? So but, but um, so I wanted to ma- make it, so, but I wanna make sure, like, my, my concern here is that we misunderstood what we could, what, what we could do here. And we've now, we've now learned that um, that, that state law says that we couldn't have been doing it that way, so we should stop, right? So but, 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 I'm, I'm so, but so to this concern that's been raised by, by Risa and Jess, like, what the state law says when it arrives, you know, seven days la- seven days afterwards probably should have been postmarked on time, but there's no postmark. That, that's just late, right?
Um, good question. I don't know uh what state law, um, how state law would be interpreted, or if it even gives that level of specificity, um, but we can look into that.
Thank you.
So for tonight, you need us to tell you whether you wanna put it on the ballot or not?
Or like we've talked about with um this ballot-themed evening, if you want me to continue to pursue and look into it further and ask for the proper wording, we can talk about this again before it, like, fu- is finalized, finalized.
Yeah. So there is a motion in the packet, I just see it in there, so moving to authorize the city manager to continue to research the topic and work with the city attorney on a ballot question. So does anybody want to put that motion on the table?
I will move that the city council, council authorized the city manager to continue to research this topic and work with our city attorney on a ballot question that would ask the voters to speci- to specify method and time of delivery for tax payments.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. I think that was unanimous. I think I heard everybody so five, five nothing. All right, thank you, guys. This ballot is gonna be a novel.
Right. Don't forget, there's a backside.
Uh, I think we're gonna need six pages at this point, but we'll see. All right, I'm gonna get to my agenda here, and we are going to cover the April meeting date adjustments.
Yes, so this on page 115 in the packet. Yes, so, this on page 115 in the packet. The, um, because of, uh, the way Passover falls in April, uh, we recommend rescheduling the first April meeting, and because April always provides us, or typically provides us, with five Wednesdays, as opposed to four, if we shift that April meeting, uh, and also shift the other meeting, we can kind of land in the correct spot and still be two weeks apart. This schedule also, um, ends up missing the school vacation week, which can be sort of helpful.
Yeah.
Um, so, the recommendation is that you reschedule April 8th and April 22nd, your regularly scheduled meetings, to April 15th and April 29th.
I'm okay with this.
Gonna get that motion, or is there any discussion that needs to happen? Seems pretty simp, simple, straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. I move that the city council reschedule, oh, right.
What are the dates, please, in, please?
April 8th.
You're in the packet, 115.
That we'd move the 8th and the 22nd to the 15th and 29th.
Thank you.
So, it would be the 3rd and 5th Wednesdays, as opposed to the 2nd and 4th Wednesdays.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I move that the city council reschedule the April 8th and April 22nd, 2026 meetings, to April 15th and April 29th, 2026.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's that Los Angeles delay. I got it. It's all good. All right, motion passes, five nothing. All right, we are moving, moving on. I believe we're moving on to the consent agenda. We do not have any executive sess, executive sessions. Uh, and can, can I get, geez, it's getting late.
I will move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, passes five zero. Councilmember comments and city manager report, Regina?
Um, just, uh, remind folks, we've got our Superfund Train Hop event happening Friday night, this, uh, this Friday night, the 12th, so that is exciting. Um, also, Tim mentioned earlier, our, uh, Public Works crew is out doing an awesome job with a pretty decent amount of snow we've already had here, um, this winter. Um, and as always, they are doing an excellent job despite really, um, having some pieces of significant equipment go down right now. So, appreciate everybody's patience as we sort through that.
Yeah, can I, can I echo that? One of the, and I, I didn't catch his name, the, there was a Public Works employee on his back underneath a plow on Crestview, um, for most of the morning, trying to get that, that truck back working. So, um, I didn't catch your name, sir, but I'm well done. And, and he didn't accept coffee when I offered him, so.
Any other comments from council?
I'm just trying to pull it up here. Give me one second. Uh, just a friendly reminder that this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. is the Fire Department Open House with Santa Claus and hot chocolate and coffee and cookies. Uh, it's a great time for everyone. I believe it's 10 to 2.
And the Fire Department will also be participating in Train Hop as well.
The, the Fire Department is a Train Hop location as well.
And candy canes.
Oh, uh, and I will not be in attendance for the city council meeting next Wednesday, as I have a scheduled conflict with the distribution of candy canes and Christmas music through the fire trucks as we parade through the city. Uh, it is the night that it worked out for the people that started it originally, and they're scheduled to move away next year. So, I'm going to take this opportunity for one last hurrah with them, uh, and just drive around. So, when you hear us in the fire truck, and the Christmas music blaring out the P.A., come outside, say hello, and get yourself a candy cane. And that is Wednesday night, December 17th.
Except for you guys, because you're in a meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Can we all agree to only excuse, uh, Tim if he's wearing a Santa costume?
I'll have my Santa hat on, but that's about it.
So, if our residents would just go out, grab a candy cane, go back inside, come watch the meeting, that would be great.
Awesome. Uh, one comment from me. I just wanted to thank everybody, uh, counselors and staff and, uh, residents who participated in the food drive. We did deliver 224 pounds of food and $550 in cash to Aunt Dot's. Um, so, thank you, everybody, and if you missed out on that opportunity, we will be doing another one on, I want to say it's March 16th, which is Tax Day. And that one will be to donate, um, food to Heavenly Pantry in the city. And it will also be a joint, uh, meet the city council, ask questions to the city council while you're dropping off that tax bill instead of putting it in the mail, so.
And don't forget to thank Mark and Erica Lumsden for loaning us the truck.
Yes, yes. Thank you to, to, to the Lumsdens for loaning us the van so that we could put the food in it. Appreciate that. Um, that's all I have, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.